Good morning. Anyone that would like to join the Board of Education in a prayer, please feel free to do so. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all your many blessings. Please go with us as we make very important decisions that affect Stokes County schools, students, and staff. We thank you for all that you do. In your name, I pray. Amen. Join us in the pledge. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? I need a motion to approve the agenda as it stands, please.
Madam Chair, on the agenda, there's a lot of contracts that were moved last year from this... Last year, we addressed them under discussion and then action, and now they're bulked into consent. Fred, when we're approving contracts, do these need to go through action? Because they're probably pretty good size.
I will say that I have reviewed each of these contracts. And I have approved each of these contracts. A lot of those, but I think some of them are within... Are some of these within the jurisdiction of the superintendent.
One of these, one of these, the CSDHH is the only one that would be within the jurisdiction of the superintendent.
I would agree that all should have some discussions and may have some questions about what are more of these.
Is there a motion to move Item B, approval of the EC contracts, to a discussion item?
I'll make that motion with the exception of Number Two, which is still within the superintendent's.
The CSDHH, leave that for consent, okay. Is there a second to Mr. Rogers' motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Bryant. All those in favor? So we'll make that discussion item E.
Are we going to be discussing the Title I application, or do we need to, or any? DE, CD, and E? I mean, normally, we... We do that. I mean...
Well, and again, the thought process behind that was, there's no changes to this. We... The Title I is an extension. The alternative accountability model is the same as we've done for the previous several years. And then, a bank change for Sandy Ridge. The bank that they have is closing, so there's... It's...
Right.
We did... We thought that the board may be okay with just consent on those items, since there's not a ton of discussion to go with those unless anything you wanted to discuss that we could pull off.
I mean, that's fine. It showed up, and I didn't know if we were going to discuss them or not. And normally, we approve consent as a block. So, I mean, I'm fine if there's nothing to discuss, but I don't want to be derelict in our duties if we don't at least know a little bit more about it than having to pop up on them.
As you just did with EC contracts, if there's any of those other items that y'all want to discuss after pre-doing the materials, we can certainly move those off. It was just an attempt to save time with, you know, again, no changes in those things and just kind of a yearly approval.
The motion was made to approve the regular agenda, but we're still asking questions about any items.
Right, right.
For example, if you have a question about the back transfer, why are we... Certainly, we discuss that particular item as well.
I mean, I'm fine with just the changes that we've made, but I want the board to be aware.
Okay, hearing no concerns or motions made to edit anything, we'll move forward with the motion that's been made and approved. So next, we need a vote to approve the consent agenda, and/or are there any discussion regarding any of these consent items?
Just quickly, as a point of order, just for my notes, did we have a motion to approve the regular agenda?
Yes.
And who made that motion?
Mr. No.
I thought when you asked for that, that's what Mr. Rogers asked.
We didn't... We haven't made the motion to approve the agenda yet.
So we need an approval of the agenda first.
Well, we would need to vote on the consent agenda modification first, and then a motion to approve the agenda as a whole.
Wasn't there a motion made to move some of those items over to?
There was a motion made to move those items, and the board voted on that, to move those.
To discussion.
Item B to discussion. So now, we just need a motion to approve.
Approve the agenda with the... Yep, as the revisions are.
I'll make the motion to approve as modified.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogers. All those in favor? So next, we have the consent agenda itself, being Items A, CD, and E, because B has now been moved. Any discussion regarding these four items? Questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Next, we have the discussion agenda new edition, discussion of creation of Stokes County Teacher Supply Store.
Yes, ma'am. This is a wonderful item this morning. We have some members of Delta Psi this morning. And I'm going to let them come to the podium and tell a little bit about Delta Psi and about the project they want to complete in Stokes County. And it's some familiar faces without the mask for those that have been around.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Debbie Merritt, for those of you who may not know me. I was on that side, but I'm proud to be here today. Delta Psi is a chapter of Delta Kappa Gamma Society International. And we found out 10 years ago that Stokes County was the only county in North Carolina who did not have a chapter. So we began researching and trying to develop a chapter. We finally found out that probably the best thing for us to do was to join in with Surrey County. And we joined a couple of members at a time until last fall, last spring. And at that time, we had enough members, and we had permission from Delta Kappa Gamma International and NUC DKG to form a chapter. So in... Because of pandemic, we didn't get to start like we thought we were going to. We were supposed to have been chartered in April, but we were chartered in September instead, September 27. We currently have 35 charter members, 18 from the Stokes County transfers from Surrey, and 17 new members from Stokes County. And we have been able to do many things even with our short period of time. We were able to present beginning teachers this year with Amazon cards and free smoothies. We were able to send them handwritten encouraging notes. We had BEE, Beginning Educator Excellence, award recipients who also receive notes and quality plans and recognition at the state level. We were also able to provide a sizable donation of toys to Toys for Tots Salvation Army. And we kept Amazon busy delivering children's books to our first vice president, Donna Wool, that we collected to distribute to the Stokes County Health Department, the pediatrician's office, and to beginning teachers. We've also sent virtual messages to teachers, just giving uplifting encouragement during this time of pandemic. And we've only been a chapter since the end of September, but we worked very hard to receive recognition at the chapter level at our state convention that was just held last week. And we were ecstatic to find out that we were able to attain the excellence status as far as chapter achievement, the things that we had done for our community. Delta Psi is a chapter that's open to all women educators, classroom teachers, school nurses, curriculum specialists, special area teachers, administrators, guidance counselors, school psychologists, school nurses. It's also now open to college students and university and college professors. So we are here in Stokes County and serving Stokes County already, but we wanted to make you aware that we are here, and we're here to help support our educators in this fine county of Stokes County. And I appreciate your allowing me to come and at least let you know that we're here. I have a brochure that I'll leave for each of you that tells a little bit more about Delta Psi and the actual organization. And again, thank you for hearing me today.
And if you'll just stay there or go ahead or tap it out, I want to make sure y'all weren't finished there, but go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lisa Williamson. I know a lot of you. I also worked with Stokes County, retired from Stokes County Schools as an elementary teacher and instructional coach. And so I have a basement full of teaching stuff from the years that I taught. And so I'm on the Beginning Teacher Committee of Delta Psi. And so I had an idea that we could give some of these things that are... We have collected, recycle these things back into the classrooms of our beginning teachers that don't, you know, are spending their own money for these kinds of things. But as we introduced this idea to our Beginning Teacher Committee, it's kind of blossomed in the fact that other folks said, yes, I have stuff in my basement, too. So even teachers who are retiring this year that are on our committee were like, I'm going to have all this stuff in my classroom. So the first thing we did was we met with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Educator Warehouse, which is a group that does this. They recycle materials on a very large scale. They have a nice, huge mobile unit, and all teachers are invited to come. Everything is free. So what we would do, when we went and met with her, she said... She gave us a tour, and then she said, the first thing you need to do is get your board to approve this. So we went to Dr. Rice then, and that's why we're here today. But our plan, what we would like to do, if we get approval from you, is to collect materials from retired teachers. We would also like to seek donations from local businesses. We would like to do something like a Stuff the Bus where people can donate materials and then make things available to our teachers. Once, each nine weeks possibly, we're just, you know, thinking through what we might could do with it. We would assign... What Forsyth County does that we liked was they assigned teachers a certain number of points. So you may have 30 points, and then things are, you know, it's kind of like a store. Things have a certain number of points on them. They come in and purchase. We'd like to give the beginning teachers more points, let them come first. But we would like to open things up to everyone, you know, have things for art teachers, music teachers, middle school teachers, high school teachers, everyone. So that's basically where we are. Delta Psi would do all the work. We would man it. We would open it. We would, you know, help people check out. We would do everything, advertising, whatever. So we're just really here to get your support for this. We're calling it a teacher marketplace right now. We really need to come up with a good name, but... So any, any questions or anything that I didn't say that you might be wondering?
When they first brought the idea to me, I ran it through the central office directors and said, okay, let's shoot holes in it. What, what, what do we need to look out for and everything? And so we met with Mr. Johnson, talked with him about it. And the one thing that we... It needed to be a Stokes County item. That way, our insurance covers it and all that. We have a location. We have one of the mobile units at Mount Olive that was just being used for storage. We can... We moved that stuff out of there in anticipation of board support. If not, it needed to be cleaned out anyway. So we have cleaned out that area so that we have a nice place that's not connected to a building that they could come and go and stock it if they wanted without disturbing any classrooms. So we have a great location. They are providing all the staffing, and we would be fine with allowing them to set their guidelines with points and things like that. But the board would need to approve it because it would be technically our facility and our shop run by their organization. But any questions that y'all have for myself, the group, Mr. Johnson?
I've got a comment. I've been in the one in Forsyth County working on air conditioning. To make a long story short, I saw stuff in there I'd like to have myself. I may be great for the kids, be really great for the kids.
I thank you for all the effort. I mean, it's great to give back.
Yeah, I think it's a wonderful initiative, especially during a time that's been so difficult for teachers. And thank you guys for encouraging them and being willing to put the time into it. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to say I thank you for this because it's been needed for years, and it's such a good idea. And like Mr. Bryant, I've been in the one in Winston, too, and, you know, it's a fabulous opportunity for new teachers and teachers that, you know, need extra materials. And so for you guys to staff it and then put all the materials in there, I think it's wonderful. And thank you for thinking of that.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you. Thank you for your hard work and your efforts. And I'm sure the teachers are going to really appreciate it. It'd be a great need. Thank you.
I think it's a great way to, for all of us who are retired or who are just people who are cleaning out, you know, several, some of the teachers on our committees that I could clean out things that new people would like. So a good way to recycle some things. I think all of us who've been in schools have seen things be discarded that could be used in other places, so.
And if the board supports this, we could put this on action at the next meeting. If we put it on there for this meeting, they could go ahead and start advertising and collecting items in preparation. As teachers are preparing to retire this year, they could go ahead and get the word out and start collecting things. So it's, you know...
Make a motion to move it to action.
Thank you.
All right, seconded by Ms. Messick. Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll make that action item B then. The Stokes County Teacher Supply Store. All right, thank y'all so much. Next, we have a discussion of the superintendent's budget recommendations and A, current expense. Any discussion, board, as far as changes, or do you have anything to present, Dr. Rice?
Board, the one item that was asked of me after the last meeting was to provide what a supplement increase would cost. I believe this not has passed that around this morning. That is one request that came in for me. As you can see from that sheet, we are currently at a 4% supplement. The far-left column, well, not the far-left column, one under superintendent budget, 4%. The column of numbers, the far-left column, tells what our current budget is for that. And with the supplement, the social security and retirement, that item is $1,008,000, $1,842,000. The increase, if we were to move it a quarter of a percent to 4.25%, would increase that total by $115,000. To move it to a 4.5% supplement would be $230,000, and 230 and 1. And then if it was a 5% supplement increasing at one full percentage point, it would be $460,001. So those are the numbers that were asked of me last time. Ms. Moore and I are happy to answer any questions that you have over the proposed budget, or it's, you know, Madam Chair's prerogative to ask people changes that they would like to make in that.
I mean, is this something that the board would like to consider in the current expense budget proposal? Or, you know, discuss this current expenses further and then come back to this?
I'd like to see it on the budget, and let's try to get it worked into a full 5% for everybody. And that's just my personal thoughts.
Any other comments?
I'll say this, as the county has done the pay equity study, we know if our employees go across to Forsyth County, they're at 11%. We're at 4. Do we see Surrey and Rockingham are?
Surrey does a flat number, correct? And the last time we checked with Rockingham, I'm not sure what they did. Do you remember, Ms. Jessup? But Surrey did a flat rate for everyone. It wasn't a percentage. If you think of this in, you know, a teacher that, beginning teacher is going to make around $40,000. That's the number that 1% is $400 a year. So that would increase their supplement from a 4%, which would be $1,600 to $2,000 a year. So that's what kind of increase you're kind of looking at at that beginning teacher number. This does make us more competitive in the region. I think Ms. Jessup's looking through her emails maybe right now to see what the regionally we were. But we were below Yadkin, Rockingham, obviously Guilford, and Forsyth.
But how do we fare against counties our size? That's the... I mean, it's hard to play with the big boys when we don't have the tax base.
Like Yadkin County?
Yadkin County is a good representative of our size.
It is, but our competition, you know, borders us, so it's tough, you know.
We fare, I know, below Allegheny County. I think theirs is like a $200 annual supplement for certified and classified. And as Dr. Rice said, Surrey has gone to a flat amount based upon years of experience. Of course, Winston-Salem Forsyth, Mr. Bryant is probably 13, 14% now. Guilford, at least that high. Rockingham.
But you're saying Allegheny's only $200 per?
Per, per year, per employee.
So we're above that?
We are above them. That's about the only county. Yadkin is, I think, at 5% if my memory serves me correctly.
Do we have any idea what Surrey is in comparison?
I could pull that scale for you based upon years of experience. I do not know off the top of my head. I'd want to get you, or some accurate information. I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I mean, I'm fine with adding 5. It's, it goes up to the hill, and then it comes back down. Okay, here's what you get, so.
Any other comments by the board or concerns?
I'd like to see us go to 5 if we could.
Okay.
To support all of our employees.
I would also be in favor of going to 5.
Well, it sounds that we have a consensus, you know, to add this to the current expense budget. If we can do that, please. As we, as you've reviewed these several pages here of the current expense, are there any other additions, corrections, or things that the board would like to see added or removed, or? Mr. Rogers, do you have any?
Jury's still out on whether athletic, high school athletic trainers, I don't think we can afford it, and I don't think it's a... I think for us, math's gone. I think for us to ask for $130,000 just for athletic trainers, when we realize that's probably more than all of the sports bring in, in its entirety, as far as revenue. I don't, I think even if we had it, even if we had the money, I don't, it's hard to justify spending it for there when there's other needs that would be greater. I know I was the one that...
And we have partnership, though. That feels a void.
The fact, yeah, the partnership that we established, and we started last year after this request, and then COVID hit. But I think we've get, I think we're on the right track for getting some help now. I know these athletic trainers originally were going to come in the fourth period and try to help some of the nursing and rehab, which we may still be able to get more active involvement from med school students to assist with that. I'd rather see us pay first responders a little more than maybe get the nurse or the doctor. That's just me.
Is that all, Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, that's all I've got.
Mr. Bryant?
I was just looking through a few things there, and some of the stuff I looked at earlier, I think we'll get to a little later, so I'll just wait till then.
I guess what I'm looking at mainly are the blue highlighted items. You know, we have two instructional coaches, two technology engineer positions, the 11 media assistants, the one maintenance position, the public information marketing position. I mean, I personally feel like that would, you know, is very much needed just because some of our other directors and all do what they can in marketing and principals. But I think that would be a good investment to, you know, try to pull in additional students, to have someone to put time into that, and then also have the time to incorporate our students that are so tech savvy and able to help. Next, we have our high school athletic trainers. So is it a consensus of the board to remove the athletic trainers?
Well, and 2 and 3 can be pulled off based on the ESAR funding that we just did. Those two items, the technology engineer positions and the media assistants, were covered at least for the next three years in the ESAR's funding. So, which all happened after this initial submission. So those two items, in my opinion, can be taken off unless you, unless you really see a need there that...
11 more, I mean.
11 more, which I don't know that we can find that many technology assistants, so.
Can, can we do this? Leave it as a line item with a $0 so that they are aware that we're funding it out of ESAR for the first three years? Just as a placeholder so that they know we're going to pick it up for the first three years?
Just maybe so it's not a surprise.
Just so it's not a, oh, by the way, we hired these. In three years, we're going to need... They can at least be thinking about that this is the way we go, but change the media assistants.
To technology assistants.
Yeah.
Right.
And I would put 2 and 3 together under technology support staff.
We could, we can at least do it on a, Ms. Moore's on the budget.
If there's nothing more than an asterisk at the bottom going, we're going to hire this many technology people to support our rollout.
I thought, did we not take that out of ESARs? No, we said that was the balance of if we drop a company, then that would flatten, that would flatten that out. So the technicians would stay because it wasn't out of ESARs. It was out of taking another line out of there. Okay. So it's just taking out the 11 media assistants. But we can take the South Dade line item out later on in the budget, yeah.
Once it comes back from on high, we can take it out.
And are we okay with the one maintenance position?
That one maintenance position would still be that locksmith position, which would not be one of the COVID positions because, again, the COVID money has to be used for COVID-related issues. And making keys and changing door locks and all that is not COVID-related.
Right.
So that's only a locksmith position?
That would be a locksmith, a carpentry one code, but would be a locksmith apprentice.
I think we need that.
Yeah.
We, I know we've tried in years past.
A locksmith's going to retire.
Eventually, he's going to get tired of playing with the keys.
He's got to train somebody, and it takes... He's got to train somebody and it takes a while to do that.
I've noticed that. Yeah, basically, these changes somewhat, these numbers cover that supplement increase when you look at swapping it out. So. Any other questions by the board?
Have we ever thought about just, since you're doing public information marketing positions and you just budgeted to $30,000? Have we ever thought about maybe doing something comparable with that amount? And maybe get someone to come in and write grants?
Yeah, I had, I'm sorry, I had wondered.
A grant writer, I think, would really help. But if that's just what they concentrated on and came in.
Like a dual role?
Well, we had looked at $30,000.
Not a dual role, an extra position. Where they know, not public information marketing and grant, I know, just a public information marketing position. And then another position that would come in and their job would be to write grants that are out there for schools. I mean, it's just an idea I've had for a while and I've thought since we're marking off 404, you know, $1,556. You know, $30,000 or $35,000, it's not a lot of money, I don't feel like. But it would be a position that they would know that was their job to look for grants. And, and I'm sure grants come up that, you know, y'all are aware of. But then, you know, it's an extra burden on someone, some director to have to write it. And so if we had one, you know, in the county, just start out with one, I think it might help. Just an idea.
All right, let me just repeat it. Okay, I was just proposing that we would have someone that had the salary as perhaps what the public information marketing position was, to come in and maybe write grants for our county. There's a lot of grants available throughout the state. But a lot of directors have so much on them to do that they don't always have time to pursue a grant. And I think we're, you know, eligible for some that probably if we had a grant writer, maybe house it, you know, up here or whatever. I don't know where you would house it, maybe at another school. But it's just an idea that I think we could pursue.
That is something that other districts have and have taken advantage of that, yes ma'am.
Do we feel like a $30,000 income would be appropriate?
I don't know, Dr. Rice. What do you think the salary would be appropriate?
With salary and benefits for that type of position, I, I don't know. I've not, I could check with some other districts and see what a number would be, but I don't know off the top of my head. I've never hired one before to know what they, the going rate is for a grant writer.
Would the, I mean, would a, a position just for a grant writer, I mean, can, can they stay busy full-time just writing grants? Or is that, would that be a full-time position?
Or part-time?
Or part-time? And why couldn't we include that in with a marketing position? Why can't we make that? Can we find somebody that can do marketing and grant writing at the same time? And I mean, is that, I'm just wondering if, you know, are there enough, is there enough grant writing out there that we can keep somebody busy full-time?
Here's, here's a thought, though. I mean, when it comes to the marketing campaign, you want somebody that's good at marketing. So that may be a better contractor's service. Perhaps you can get a grant writer and a quote MTSS coordinator to take that burden off. Because that seems to be, from the last meeting, the hot topic. So, and look, Forsyth County is trying to hire one and their MTSS director or coordinator was a $45,000 to $55,000 a year position. We couldn't afford that, but perhaps we find somebody that can handle the MTSS paperwork and write grants to where one, one position, yes, we add one position, but we're filling multiple jobs and taking some of the overwhelming burden off of some of those.
Well, I think if we combine that, then $30,000 is not enough.
I, I would say that you'd need to look at around $50,000 to $55,000 in benefits.
Right, because that is very low.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about keeping this 30 as a line item, but adding 55 for a coordinator's position.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I like that idea because I think Mr. Rose and Ms. McGee are way overworked as it is. And they probably do need some help.
Who's got the hot potato now? Which one of y'all is doing it? No, the, the MTSS. Oh, she's low man, low person today? And you're going to pass it to somebody else next week, right? If, okay.
But I'm, I'm thinking, you know, keep the $30,000 for media and let's hire a, somebody that does this for a living. Instead of somebody who, nah, I want to try it. And then do MTSS and grant writing, because the grant writing should pay for the whole position.
Right.
The grant writing would have indirect cost, which would allow some of that to come out of there, depending on how the grant is. Some grants allow for indirect cost up to 2%, some up to 4%, which, you know, if you write a large enough grant, that starts taking help, to help with that salary as well. But it just depends on what grants are available that year and for that cycle.
So do we have any idea what, how, how much we're missing in grants?
I mean, I know this guy, I know it's a, a number we don't want published, but different years are different amounts, but there are clearinghouses that have grants go through all the time. And to be honest, we're not sitting there pouring through those every day.
If you had to take an arbitrary guess, can we get $200,000 a year potentially in grants?
I see some of the directors nodding their head.
Potentially, yes.
Because if, if, if we can spend 55 and get 200, I'm all in.
Yeah.
Call me silly.
It's going to pay for itself.
The thing about some grants, though, is you apply for it and you get it, but then you have to match it. And so our county is, I mean, our school system really doesn't have a lot of money to match some of the really large grants. So some of those, you know, you couldn't really, you might could get them and then you couldn't get them really because you couldn't match them.
Like a nuclear.
And you're correct, some are like that.
That's right.
Say that you can use income services as your match. And that's where a lot of our partner agencies come in and help in those type things. So it just depends on how the grant's written. I mean, some grants, we wouldn't qualify for our lack of diversity, if you will.
Right.
Some, our free reduced lunch percentage may not be high enough. Some, our graduation rate may not be low enough. But that's the thing is every grant that rolls through, and again, there's a clearinghouse that you go through there, but you have to go through every one of them to see if you qualify or not. And so is it a full-time job just about?
Because you have to really scroll and look.
You're constantly looking through those, checking them off. Do you qualify, do you not? And then if you do, I mean, I remember the first one I wrote, I wrote it in a summer and it took me about 60 hours. So it took a week and a half to try to get a $100,000 grant. And it ends up, we didn't qualify for it. I thought we did, but in the fine print, we didn't. But again, that was just one grant pursue, took 60 hours to try to get $100,000. But if you had somebody full-time to do all of that, there, there's tons of potential there. It just depends on what comes out every, you know, on the clearinghouse. But I would say there's, you know, on a year-to-year basis, the chance to get $200,000 is pretty high.
And do you think there's enough grants out there that we wouldn't have to match a lot of them that we couldn't afford? Because there's no point in writing a grant and spending all that time if we couldn't match it.
Again, that's predicting what may come out, but I think based on what has come out in the past, there would be enough to, to be a benefit.
Well, thank you, it's, it's an idea, I think.
The next three years, we have ESTAS money that may allow us to do some budget moving or creative financing Ms. Moore is excellent at.
Well, and looking at raw numbers, if you pull numbers three and six off of the request, that total is 534, 556. And if you replace that with the supplement, that's 46001. That leaves a difference of 74, 555. So again, the numbers work out fairly closely. Again, if you did a $50,000 to $55,000 position with benefits. So those numbers kind of give you an idea of what the numbers would look like.
But there's also a 1.3 increase, increase.
So hopefully, their ESTAS funding will say they have to spend it on schools.
So is it a consensus to add MTSS, what do we call it, director or?
Coordinator.
Coordinator and grant writer at 55,000?
Well, it's probably going to be closer to 60 with benefits, Ms. Moore, wouldn't it? 60 to 60?
What would be a safe number, Ms. Moore? Okay.
Well, I'd figure 50. Because that's midway of what Forsyth County was going to do.
Okay, so 50. 50 plus benefits, okay. Any other changes that the board would like to see in the current expense? Are we okay with how, how it is, how it's presented? I do have a question, something that's kind of came up. I guess it's more for Dr. Taylor. The changes, you know, with the tiered bus system going forward. Have we considered, you know, was there a consensus by bus drivers to want the additional hours? Should there be any type of incentive there? You know, maybe we're asking some to go and do more than they had signed on for, you know, originally. What are your thoughts on that?
In all fairness and full transparency, we have not had a meeting with just the bus drivers. We did look at it from the standpoint, we felt like that it would be better for them. We didn't think we would have a lot of people upset about the potential of earning more money. They also had the same opportunity to respond to the survey that went out to all staff members. Mr. Langford is here and he has talked with the board members. We had a couple of CPR classes last week, if I'm not mistaken. And there may be some that, that have more detailed questions, but in, in full transparency, no ma'am. We have not met with just the bus drivers. But we felt like being able to, again, offer them some moving into benefits that were not, the opportunity to make more money. We did not see that as a negative. If some of them decide not to pursue or not to continue in that role because of this change, then we do think it would be easier for us to recruit and retain new drivers based on more hours, more salary and more benefits. But I, Mr. Langford, do you have anything? Have you heard from multiple bus drivers? Can, can you speak to how your, your meetings or your conversations have gone?
Yes. Like Dr. Taylor said, we had some CPR classes last week. We've got some more this week. And I'm trying to get up and talk to the drivers about this at each of those meetings. And the meetings we had last week with those drivers, it was all very successful. I mean, they didn't have any real worries or questions. I think the biggest concern that they had was would they be losing their route? And I reassured them that we're only looking at cutting six routes, two in the North District, two in the South, one EC bus that really didn't run this year in the King area, and one of the early college routes. Well, we already have six vacancies. So we're just not replacing those drivers. So no, no one who is driving the bus right now will lose their route. There are two drivers that drive in the North District that have already retired from state employment. And they can't earn but a certain amount of money a year and they can't, and they're already on benefits from where they retired. So they can't go over six hours a day. They were concerned about that and I reassured them that we do have, not every route is going to go to benefits. So we have some routes that we would be able to put them on to be able to work with them so they could still drive and not go into benefits and not affect their retirement. And then the other drivers that would likely be going into benefits that aren't currently in benefits, they were excited about it. It's like Dr. Taylor said, I think that's a big incentive going forward to recruit and retain bus drivers is to try to come up with a little more pay and benefits. I know in talking with Darrell Walker out in Forsyth County, they're looking at putting every one of their bus drivers on benefits because they just can't find drivers. I mean, that's sort of the hang-up. It's not so much the hourly rate, you know, $12 an hour, $15 an hour. But it's how many hours a day you can work. You know, if you only work four hours a day, even if you made $15 an hour, that's not that much. But if you can work six or seven hours a day, you know, now you're getting into a substantial amount of money where it could be worth your time. And then if you add benefits on top of that, yes ma'am.
I do have a question. You know, new drivers, do they make very close to what like a five-year driver or so would make? That was the impression that I've got is there's not much difference in brand-new versus a more seasoned driver.
I know that our beginning drivers make 1207. I have not memorized the entire pay scale. I think after five years, it only goes up one step.
It was very small increments.
It is, it's very small incremental steps as they go up.
But the state max is 18 an hour? Right.
It's 15, 60.
But I mean, the max that we're allowed to pay from the state.
It's 15 something. Now, we have some drivers at 18, but we're, the local is having.
So the state max is 15, we start at 12. So when you divide that over a 30-year, it, it's not going to be a whole lot of.
Yeah, 10% is a dollar 20.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking it was around 18.
And, and another part of the answer was when we brought the proposal to the board, we wanted to, to wait and see what your final decision was to either move forward or not. And now that you have given us the green light, we are working on finalizing routes, bringing more detail to those routes. And we will then begin meeting with our drivers. Before they leave this year, we will sit down with them and we will talk about, give them a chance to ask questions, answer questions. But back to the original answer, no ma'am. We have not met with them individually at this point, but we felt like that it was good news. I mean, anytime you can go to someone and say you have a chance now to earn more, we felt like that was a benefit.
Earn more and working more hours. I just didn't know if some people were in a position maybe where they knew, you know, that the amount of hours and then they had something else to do and then, you know what I mean?
If that happens, then as Mr. Langford said, we will do our best to, to see if there are any routes.
I didn't want to, right.
Available that would better fit their schedule. I have had one question from an EC regarding a special needs bus. Remember, if, if you will remember, we are not changing those routes because they have monitors and a lot of those monitors are already in classroom, like a TA.
Right.
So we did not want to impact that or wanted to minimize that impact. But we will, if anyone has any questions, have them to give us a call. Give Mr. Langford a call, we'll do our best to answer their questions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just think that, yeah, the sooner you can meet with them, the better. Just so no one's sort of surprised at their schedule change since they've not really been that informed that the change is coming. That's, that's all. And then I just wanted to ask, you know, if, you know, if you felt it would be appropriate, if there's anything we needed to do differently, you know, regarding bus driver pay? Or if we feel that it's competitive?
Hard to get bus drivers.
Any other concerns or questions? Then we'll move on then. Any, yes?
When, in the superintendent's budget for the new request, we did not put those new requests in priority order. So when we submit it to the commissioners, do you want to leave it that way? Or does the board want to decide and put it in priority order? That's the question.
You're talking about the blue?
Yes, sir.
The blue page?
We can put them alphabetical bullets or if the board would like to numerically put them in priority order, we can. Sometimes they ask that when we go up there. They'll say, well, what is your number one? What is your number two?
Recommendations board on the number one? Recommendations board on the number one, or would we like to prioritize? I don't have a problem with prioritizing.
Dr. Rice, just for clarification, the new list will include instructional coaches.
Technology engineer.
And engineer, maintenance position, public information, contract service, the increase, one percent supplement increase.
Well, that's a new request that the board, and then the MTSS coordinator grant writer.
So that would now be the new blue list, correct?
Right.
And so you put number one after number four, take out number two, and you're done?
Or please repeat that.
Or take out number three. Move technology engineer to number one, move everything up one. Start with removing three, so we can scratch that one. And then put instructional coaches after the maintenance position. And we struck number six anyway. So we're saying maintenance position is number one? Technology engineer position.
Okay.
And then maintenance.
Where would you like your supplement?
Yeah, where would supplement fall, as well as the grant writer and the marketing position?
If we put a one, one percent additional increase as a new item, I think that. You better tell them what we did.
Yeah, it's more transparent.
Yeah, I think we need to say we're asking for a one percent supplement increase. I think our staff needs to hear that. I think they need to hear that clearly rather than just saying there's an increase in the supplement cost. Because we have, the reason there's an increase, because we changed it. If it's a year-to-year salary difference, we don't mention it. But if we increase the percentage, I think it should be mentioned.
Yeah.
So would we like to make the supplement increase number three?
Yes.
And then number four being the MTSS coordinator grant writer? Or the public information marketing position?
I'd put it above public information marketing, because it's a higher dollar figure.
So MTSS, number four, and number five being the public information marketing.
Right.
And might I suggest we spell out what MTSS is?
Multi-tiered system of support and all that, yes.
You and I know that. I know that because I asked some people last week.
Right.
I mean, it's a wonderful buzzword. It sounds real important, but nobody knew what it was.
Yeah, we know. The school system uses a lot of.
Yeah.
Question, instructional coaches, as a reminder, where did y'all have that?
What number was that? Above.
Just go over it in order.
I would put it below the new MTSS director and above the contract services.
So you would have technology positions, maintenance, supplement, MTSS, instructional coaches.
And then public information marketing position, yes, sir.
But stress grant writer also.
Yes.
Because that hopefully will become, in essence, a self-funded.
Right.
Or easier to justify.
I don't care if we put grant writer portion first, whatever, but we want to emphasize that.
We may do that.
Thank you.
Just go over it one more time.
Okay, so number one, we have the two technology engineer positions. Number two, we have the one maintenance position.
Right.
Number three, we have the supplement percentage increase.
Right.
Number four, we have the MTSS coordinator grant writer. Number five, we have the two instructional coaches, elementary and high. And number six, the public information marketing position. Is everybody consensus with this? Okay. Would the board like to move on to capital outlay? Are there any further discussion regarding the current expense budget?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We had discussed it in one of our earlier meetings about, on page nine, the number three, the band materials. And I think we had, we're going to maybe get with the band directors and try to figure out if there's things we need. And I'd asked Ms. Cock at West Stokes to send us a list. I haven't seen the list. I don't know.
I've not seen the list either, but Mr. Rose did meet with the band directors.
Yes, I met with the high school and middle school band directors. And, you know, just tried to get a feel for what would help them to sustain the program and make it more functional. They threw out a lot of the things, and I'm sure they've shared with you, about the cost of a sousaphone, the cost of certain individual piece of equipment, and then sort of the Band Aid approach with the repairs. I had a real difficult time getting them to say a specific amount. So I basically said, would this amount help? Until we kind of agreed with some numbers. You know, I think right now it was one thousand dollars. The numbers that we had discussed were thirty-five hundred for repairs, purchases, and then possibly up to a thousand dollars for new music to draw into the program. So that's just some of the numbers that they shared with me.
So would that move to forty-five hundred times six goals?
Yes, ma'am.
If I'm understanding you correctly.
And if it's, if we can get it to that point on a yearly basis, and, you know, they're not going to have to replace all the instruments the first year. You know, it's just, I think the number has been so low in the past that it's, it's just not enough to work with.
So let's edit this particular item to twenty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Forty-five hundred times six goals, is that what you were thinking?
Okay. Ms. Moore shared that if it's new equipment, it would need to be under the capital.
Yeah, if it's over five hundred dollars, it goes to the capital.
Okay.
So do we need to move, do we need to?
Actually.
Put some of that into the capital fund? Or what do we need to do?
If you're talking, well, I guess the question is, are you looking right now doing a lot of repairs and sheet music for the forty-five hundred dollars each? And then making, when we go to the capital budget, putting a line, maybe like we do fall protection, that every year we're designating five thousand dollars to band instruments, ten thousand dollars to band instruments, that's a reoccurring fee. We could, the board could certainly choose to do something like that. But the question is, with meeting with them, are you talking the forty-five hundred dollars was also planning on buying some equipment or just repair and sheet music?
There was talk of new instruments within that as well.
So that line item may go down, could go down. If we're talking a thousand dollars a school for new instruments, to get two new instruments a year, that might be down to thirty-five hundred dollars a year out of this line item and looking to put six or twelve thousand dollars in to the capital budget.
And then just let the bands, as needed, on a request?
And that's money that could be carryover money as well, that if they did need something one year, if they got two thousand dollars, next year they have four thousand dollars. And in a couple of years, they may want to buy a ten thousand dollar cuba, or they may want to buy a bunch of, and I'm making this up, five hundred dollar flutes. I don't know.
Right.
But they could kind of control that at that level to use it as needed. And since that's local money, that could build up to make a substantial purchase later if they needed it.
I think that would work.
I tried to use the term, you know, sustain your program. Because, you know, I know when we start talking about brand-new instruments and all that, you could really run some huge totals. But if we're looking at, you know, sort of a ten, fifteen-year plan.
Phase.
Of sustainment, yes. So that's something I tried to emphasize with them.
Some extra help there to, a thousand, just, you know, a thousand dollars a band just doesn't cover very much. And it's really starting to show, I think, on probably a lot of the bands.
Where would the money be housed for purchasing new band equipment?
Where would the money be housed?
Would it go to the schools? Or would it be in a?
What we would do in that case, we'd do an allotment, just like we do with our instructional supplies. We would do an allotment sheet, give them a code and the amount. And then their request would flow into this office for approval.
Okay, so they'd know how much they had at their school that they could spend.
And it would be a restricted allotment if you were designated just to be a band, that meaning they couldn't use it for other things.
Okay, yeah, that'd need to be restricted, yeah.
So, so forty-five, what we had looked at for each school, drop that thirty-five or twenty-five and put the other money in capital, a thousand or two thousand per school in capital.
Thinking two thousand.
What was their, what was their kind of discussion?
We really did not get that far into it as far as designating new equipment versus repairs. I'd like to meet back with them and bring some more information to you if possible.
Or would we like to say right now, we're talking a thousand dollars, move that to twenty-five hundred? That's more than doubles what they're currently getting for sheet music and repairs, and then give them a two thousand dollar each capital allotment? Or do you want that flat rate across the board? Or do y'all want that kind of prorated by size, ADM? I mean, band equipment is band equipment, but, you know, Southeastern has a very large band. You know, it's band is larger than South Stokes right now. But, you know, but South Stokes is bigger than Southeastern, so there's.
And they may have better ability to fundraise than the small bands too, that's the.
And so, I mean, there's several different ways to look at that. We've been doing the flat rate since before I came here for a long time. But the question is, is that the model that you want to keep is a flat rate for each band? I think we need to allocate it to the size of the band because North Stokes is smaller than South Stokes, and they have a larger band. So if you do it by ADM, you're doing a disservice to.
So by class attendance or program attendance in a sense?
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, if you've got a hundred people in the band, you've got a hundred people wearing out instruments. So we could withhold that allotment to the start of school and see what the class sizes are and allot it appropriately.
And in the meantime, add in addition to capital of at least, what, twelve thousand?
That's what that would be, yes, ma'am. Well, I wouldn't say you've got to wait till the beginning of the year because they probably need to purchase their stuff upfront, base it off last year.
Right.
Not this, not this year. That's true, you can do it off of last year very easily. Yeah. Again, from year to year, it's not going to change a ton. Right.
Right.
Fractions of percentages. Now, over the course of time, you know, hopefully it does change where bands are getting larger. But this would be, it's not going to be a huge shift from year to year.
So are we like to leave this amount here in our current, or are we decreasing and shifting?
I would say we said twenty-five hundred times six. So fifteen thousand instead of twenty-seven. Instead of six, we'd talk twenty-seven, but.
The difference would be in capital?
Yes. So it'd be fifteen thousand in the line three on page nine. It would go from six to fifteen. And then when we get to capital next, we would look at adding a twelve thousand dollar line item for band equipment.
And that'll be, that'll be kind of divided up by the number of students in the band.
Correct.
Pretty much.
Okay.
And if the board wants, we'll know that coming year, in the coming years, we will have that line, kind of like we do fall protection, that we'll just have band capitalized equipment and have a twelve thousand dollar line item. And, you know, if there's a bigger need and somebody comes up, we can always adjust that.
Especially in capital, if there's a bigger need, if they need a bigger instrument, then they can always submit the request, I guess, and approve it out of capital.
Correct.
Yeah. Any other concerns regarding the current expense budget, board?
I know at the last meeting, I passed out some handouts about aviation, some information on aviation. And I'd like for us to maybe get into a discussion. I don't know that we can, we could have anything ready for this coming year. But I'd like to see us explore the possibility of doing an aviation academy. I passed out some of the information. I just think that that's a trade that, that we could take advantage of. I had a conversation yesterday with a gentleman that works for American Airlines. He's an airline mechanic. He works in Charlotte. But he was telling me about, there's three or four places now at Smith Reynolds. Over in Greensboro, there's several places that have these hangers that are mechanics. One of the places in Winston just got a contract, I think, with American Airlines. So there's a lot of new jobs coming in the mechanic line. And these jobs are jobs that will start out at twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour, which is going to translate into about fifty to sixty thousand a year. So you take a twenty-one-year-old student coming out making fifty or sixty thousand dollars, you know, that's a pretty good start. And there's also in that packet I had there that Elizabeth City State University has a four-year program in aviation. And a student can go to Elizabeth City State on five hundred dollar tuition per year. So that's a good opportunity there, I think. In a lot of our county, we can be to Smith Reynolds Airport or Greensboro Airport within thirty minutes for a lot of our county. We get back up into the northeastern, I guess, part of this county. It's a little bit farther drive, but it's a good opportunity. I know that we've got the Fire Academy now. And when we talked about the Fire Academy, I think that idea was hatched to try to get interest for the volunteer fire departments throughout the county. That that was going to save us some money for the, you know, the county not having to hire firemen. This is a, this is an opportunity here to actually get training, get credits, get some of these students certified, that they can actually get out of school and get a job. And I'm not sure what we'd need to do to explore this. I know Forsyth Tech has a new program starting up at Smith Reynolds. If we could partner with Forsyth Tech and teach some of the classes through Forsyth Tech. I just, I'd like to see us at least get it to where we're exploring it. I had talked to Alan Murdoch, I think is his name, from Forsyth Tech one day. And he told me to get with Doug Rose. He said Doug knows what to do. And I think Doug had, was involved with the Fire Academy with Alan. So I don't know if we can have meetings with Forsyth Tech. And like you said, maybe get it to where within a, maybe the second half of this coming year or the following year, that we can have it ready to go and explore, you know, what the cost would be, what we need to do. But I would like to see us work towards that, and I think it'd be great for some of our students. It's a great field.
Just a couple of things to put on the, to put on the radar as we're looking at some of these things. We're at a point right now, when I first came on, we were at three hundred and fifty-two months of employment straight through CTE. We get an O-13 allotment, which is by months. That is down to three hundred and eight. I'm extremely proud of the work that has been happening within CTE and with our board to keep our programs going and to continue offering new things, such as the Fire Academy. At our next board meeting, I plan to go ahead and present the local application and plan to let you know some of the things that we are offering. When you mentioned Forsyth Tech, you know, I completely agree that that's probably our avenue to add new programs at this point. Because, you know, we're trying to maintain the programs and looking at our student interest and the programs that they're signing up for. Through Forsyth Tech with their trades building, we are going to be able to add welding and electrical certificates for our students next year.
Will they transport themselves, or will we help with that?
They'll need to transport themselves for juniors, for juniors and seniors, yes, ma'am. With Forsyth Tech and their ability to offer the CCP classes, that is the way that we can add these programs without having to add personnel under O-13 allotments.
And that's through partnerships?
Through career in college promise.
Promise.
That way, you know, we always called it dual enrollment when I was in school. But the biggest concern for me right now is just looking at our months of employment and maintaining personnel and programming.
If you think of it, when he says we have three hundred and eight months, that's roughly thirty-one positions. So if you think of, we get thirty-one checker pieces, that's how many positions we have. So if the board comes to us and says, well, can we do this program in middle school? Well, the answer is always yes. But it may mean that we have to take another position and riff someone if they don't have the certification for what we're wanting to offer them. Reduction in force, fire them, whatever term you want to use, and put that checker piece now in this slot. Because we have thirty-one positions. And right now, every one of those positions are teaching at least one subject, if not multiple subjects. I think of our rock star at North Stokes, Mr. Fulp, that probably teaches six different classes a year, three different in the fall and three different in the spring. That allows us to offer so many different. Uh, three different in the fall and three different in the spring, that allows us to offer so many different courses at North Stokes because he's picked up so many certifications through the years. And so, you know, if Forsyth Tech can offer these positions, that's great. If we need to pick up a position and one of those, that would fill those out, we would have to take away from something. Um, and we're able to do that sometimes when Mr. Rose is very savvy and looking at retirements. And when something comes through, we try to see, okay, this may be a time to say, do we need to hire somebody with those same certifications or is this a chance to change? You know, if at one point we were doing wagon wheels, you know, we don't need wagon wheels anymore. But, you know, so that, that would be a chance to change into something new. Uh, the push lately has been a lot of technological classes with computers and things, because that's been the, and that's come at the expense of some of the automotive classes, or when I was in high school, heating and air classes, I know were taught. And masonry was taught in a lot of places, and some of those have gone away for more technical stuff. But if we wanted to add those things back, that's something we could certainly look at, but then you have to also look at student enrollment. If you've got a Microsoft Word class that's filling up twenty-five students every period, three periods a day, so you're serving a hundred-and-fifty students a year in Microsoft Word Office, and I'm, no, I'm butchering it, what, what the actual class is called, and say, well, we want to put in brick masonry and there's only thirty kids that want to take it.
Right.
So then, do we move that chess piece to serve less kids for a different area? That's just the, what Mr. Rose deals with constantly in CTE is trying to figure out where those thirty-one fleet, places can go to serve the most students as possible with the needs we have, with the, with we, what we have. Now, with the Fire Academy, the commissioner said, well, go outside your thirty-one. We'll fund this extra one, this is going to be a benefit to our county. We're able to do that, as long as they continue to remember to do that year after year after year in the budget, we're in a good place. Uh, if for some reason, one year they stop that, then we have to look, can we cover it locally with our fund balance? Or do we have to move another checker piece?
And we do look within our, our pathway documents too. You know, when you're mentioning Word and Excel and PowerPoint, some of those programs are, are dated, and that may not be a skill that leads directly to employment. Although, when we look at NC careers, we do see the administrative services growing. Uh, that was one thing that we looked at within the CLNA. But cybersecurity is huge with Forsyth Tech as well. So we've shifted to some computer programming, in particular with South Stokes. We took their business teacher and he's doing Python one, Python two, and then AP computer programming. Um, financial services is huge right now. So we've shifted at West Stokes to offer some financial planning one and two. So, you know, we're, we're exploring those career fields and trying to, to find ways to shift our programming to meet the current industry needs and increase, you know, job opportunities for our students as they move. Also, you know, I've constantly heard that we need to increase the, the trades. So we now have, you know, the construction classes being offered at West. And at, at South, we've kept our two automotive programs active. We're trying to add in the programs with Forsyth Tech. We're welding and electrical, looking to the future to possibly do, you know, plumbing as well. So, you know, we're trying to meet those high-demand fields with what we have and still sustain the programs and meet their needs as much as possible.
But specifically answer your question, Mr. Rose can certainly have a conversation with Forsyth Tech about aviation, what classes they could offer and what classes our students could take part of. I don't know, some of the classes like that, and again, Mr. Rose is a lot better, well-versed in this than I am, have age restrictions and different things that may exclude some of our students. But if there's some things that we could get them in to help toward that pathway, kind of like the Fire Academy. They can't fully leave our, our academy fully licensed, but they would still have to, once they graduate, have to go to some other classes, correct?
We do one, two, and three, they'd have their certifications to move forward.
Okay, I thought there was something though that we couldn't because of.
There was one module involving a burn house. Um, and I'm thinking that was a holdup within the community college and age limits, but I can find more information for you on that.
And, and we had also talked about possible BLET, and there's some age limits on that as, as well. That they could get some precursor classes to help push them toward that field or prepare them for that field, but they couldn't take the actual BLET classes uh, in high school and stuff.
And to speak directly to what you're saying, I'll be happy to have a conversation with Mr. Murdoch and reach out to some of my peers within the region and see which ones they're offering aviation, what that looks like, and, and get us at least some details in the program.
And we'll make a check with Pasquot County Schools to see if they're offering any precursor CTE classes to go for that.
Program.
That program there at, at the college level.
Well, in the handout that I had the other day, um, Guilford County has a aviation academy at High Point Andrews High School. And uh, and just in the handout here, it says about the aviation academy, uh, says the Andrews Aviation Academy offers three tracks, engineering, aviation management, pilot, and maintenance. So there's different tracks that they can take. Students can earn credit toward their Federal Aviation Administration and Industry certifications license and graduate high school with up to four semesters completed at Guilford Technical Community College, which I think we could partner with Forsyth Tech instead of Guilford Tech. Says tuition and books are free. Uh, says the aviation, aviation academy is a cohort, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, C-O-H-O-R-T, it's a cohort program for all classes. A cohort class will move as a group to all classes such as English, sciences, word language as examples. Um, and also I think probably in this aviation, from what I've read before, there's a lot of drafting classes and those types. So, uh, I don't, I'm not sure that we don't already uh, provide some of those classes, that they'd be taken.
So they're doing it like a small learning community?
Right, so maybe if there was an academy, the, the, the kids could sign up and we could put them on that path uh, for the first couple of years of high school, uh, get what they need, and then maybe partner with Forsyth Tech and send them to Forsyth Tech to, to take some of those aviation classes, get their certifications. And then when they graduate high school, if they're not already certified, they maybe only have one more year of class to, to get certified. So I'm not sure that it's going to take, you know, a whole separate program for us. I think it's just maybe developing a pathway for them.
Well, and what, it does take some teacher training. Uh, with the small learning community design, and I know, again, I'm going to make this simplified. Um, when you take that English class as a cohort, if there's eighteen kids that want to be in the aviation academy, when they go into freshman English and they write a paper, it's going to be with an aviation focus in that paper. It's not going to be about whatever current event's going on at that time, it's going to have a focus. When they go to math classes, the word problem's going to be in that aviation focus. Well, that math teacher may not know what aviation mathematics are, they have to be trained in that so that then everything that they're learning in math is the content of the math, but with that focus. When they go to science class, again, the, the focus becomes, you know, you may talk about erosion in one area, but it's going to, and how does that affect an airplane, or how does that affect in building landing strips or in those type things? So the entire focus changes, so a regular teacher may not have that aviation background to know those things. There's that training that has to go on the front end to prepare them. I went through something similar to that with, in Ashburn High School when they did the zoo school fifteen years ago, where everything was with a zoo and agricultural focus that, you know, every paper they wrote mast was about stuff that they could learn about at the zoo, at that classroom. So it, it just takes a training focus with the teachers at the beginning as much as anything when you're using that as that small learning community.
But it's not necessarily adding a different teacher.
It's just getting that teacher ready.
Training for that different teacher.
Wouldn't we have to put everybody, if we're going to open it up for the county, we're going to have to put it at one specific school, correct? Now we've got to provide transportation like we do for the early college.
Yeah.
And create that focus.
Well, I think we've opened up the door for this, you know, discussion, and it offers a lot of positives. And me personally, I, I look forward to hearing back with what um, Mr. Rose discovers. So this is definitely, I think it's something to consider going forward.
Yeah, I would like to see us explore it. I think it's, like I said, I think it's uh, and the gentleman I was talking with yesterday, uh, at his workplace, he said, uh, now you go in, there's maybe forty or fifty guys working, typically there's two-hundred in this hangar working uh, on airplanes. Um, and I know uh, there was a company that used to be in Winston called Timco, and they've changed their name now, and I can't remember the new name.
Heiko.
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 Yeah.
And they're building a new hangar uh, to uh, to expand their uh, uh, to expand their services. Uh, and then over in Greensburg Airport, you got Honda Jet, which is a, a little bit different, uh, maybe type of work. Uh, in Elizabeth City State University, you can go get your uh, uh, air traffic controller, a pilot. Uh, so there is actually a four-year aviation program there that you can sign up for. Uh, but it's just something we don't offer.
Right.
Uh, and it's uh, uh, a lot of trades, uh, all the trades are good. Uh, but uh, I think it just uh, maybe gives us an opportunity to offer something that, uh, hopefully without too much extra costs, uh, we could do, and I think would appeal to a lot of, a lot of students.
Yes, yes, I agree.
And good jobs.
Mm-hmm.
And they're all good jobs.
I know we need to get back to the budget.
Right.
As I can honestly say, of, of the generation that my son graduated with, for everyone that went into automotive, there's thirty that's working at Heiko or in the aviation, or they went to the Air Force and continued.
Exactly.
Yeah. Oh, nobody's fixing their own cars anymore, but people are fixing jets.
Right, 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 um.
You take our physics teachers, for example, they probably already know that math. At least when I took it in high school back in the eighties, they knew it, you know, and I'm sure that the ones we've got already know that. So that wouldn't be a big deal on training the mathematics part of it.
Um, before moving on to capital outlay, let's take a quick recess, okay? Five minutes, thank you.
I'm off of that.
One thousand in the
But everybody would get the other money in the
But that's for sheet music.
That's for sheet music and repairs. This would be for new equipment, over five hundred dollars.
And the new equipment over five hundred dollars, they share that twelve thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my goodness. All right. That's really not a lot of money.
And it's not a lot of money. It's twelve thousand more than they've been getting. Uh, they've been getting nothing. And so, yes, this is a start for a year to see what it is, but if the board wants to increase that amount, that's the board's prerogative.
Well, that's good that it's reoccurring.
Yep. Like we said, too, if they have additional needs, they can always request that under the capital. If a band has it, if they need to buy a tuba and it's expensive, a tuba's not gonna, a tuba's more, way more than the two thousand dollars, they'd have to save up for three or four years just to buy that one instrument. So they may send that request in as a separate item.
Well, the thing is, I think the repairs, there's probably a lot of instruments piled up that need to be repaired. Uh, but most, most band students rent their, rent to own their band, uh, instrument. And that's why, that's one of the reasons why the bands keep decreasing, uh, in the number of students. That's just one of the reasons. But most band students, uh, buy their own. Thank you.
Bless you. Any other changes or corrections or anything that the board would like to see, um, the priority change in this list here of, um, thirty-seven items?
Do we feel like we have everything on the list that we need on the list?
There are.
Uh, I mean, all these other pages of all these other things are all need. Uh, but normally we get about one point seven million, one point eight million. So we've tried to keep it around that number, but all of these other pages are, are, are needs. Uh, again, asphalt at Germanton is a need that at some point would cost around three hundred thousand dollars to fix. Um, you know, the, the gem HVAC at King Elementary, there are several months a year that it's extremely hot in there. That's three hundred thousand dollars to fix it. So there's lots of, uh, Richie, do you remember what our total budget number was? It was around six million dollars? Little over six million dollars of, of request, and that again is limiting people to three items. Um, when, a couple of years ago, when Ricky, Mr. Burge and myself rode around the schools, there were about sixty million dollars in needs and talking about all, all of these older buildings and, and that's not even counting, you know, and those are still sixty-year-old buildings. So there's lots of needs, but we think that this is the most critical needs, bang for our buck, all of that type of item that's gonna be around the budget number. Now, if they give us one point seven, the board will have to come back and, and cut four hundred thousand out of this list, uh, to determine what we actually get. Uh, but, you know, that's what we're kind of looking at is about three or four hundred thousand dollars over what we've got in the last couple of years in this number.
Were the tennis courts at Pine Grove listed even as a secondary item?
Actually, I'm not sure that they even made it on Pine Grove's list this year. Uh, we have been asked about that by, by a parent group, and I think a group came to you and asked, but when Ms. Pendleton and her staff put together their list, I don't even believe that it was on their list that was submitted.
Yeah. I did see the request on the secondary list from North Stokes. I just wondered if, uh, one of those schools had decent courts that were not in shambles or if they both are.
Well, and again, the, the pictures that she showed or the pictures she showed, that's accurate, where she said, well, this cracks five inches deep. It is, but it's quarter inch wide. It's not, somebody's foot's not gonna fall in and they're gonna break their ankle on it. Uh, is it a crack? Yes, it's a crack, but it, we didn't feel like there was a safety. We have not foreclosed, not foreclosed, what's the, no.
Condemned the tennis courts.
We've not condemned the tennis courts because we feel that it is a hazard for people to twist ankles right and left when they're out there. Uh, is there gonna be some grass that grows up in it? Yes. Uh, is there a five-inch crack? Deep? Yes, there is. There's no denying that. But we also have PE classes playing out there every day. And if they have a first aid list coming in every day on that, no one has certainly let us know. Uh, so we're not aware of injuries that are taking place based on the conditions of the current courts now.
I noticed that North Stokes did have theirs on the list, on the, but it didn't make the thirty-seven. Is it, what kind of shape is it in? I mean, is it any safety issues or about the same?
Not aware of the safety issues. Again, they've been playing on it every year and
Right.
So the, and not aware of any injuries. Again, we see it, uh, there's, where you have the white lines on the tennis court, there's a different heat absorption than there is when there's not the white lines. And it, for some reason, that's where they crack, especially on those white lines. Also, you can't run a full width of asphalt. It's in strips. Well, where the strips meet, there's cracks developing there as well. And I'm talking way too much. Ricky's and Richie know, know a lot more about this than I do. I've just told you what they've told me through the years. And we've gone out there and looked. That's, that's sure enough where it is. So they, they do deteriorate over time, and there are normal cracks that occur in them, but not to the point where we've condemned any of them and said there's too many safety issues to be out here.
So it'd be okay to play a tennis match on. It's not gonna be a hole in it. It's burning the ball over yonder or something.
Right. There, there are tennis matches and, uh, again, ev- nearly every court we go to, when I've seen other, ours are very similar to what others are now.
They're just normal wire and tire.
Just wire and tire.
Yeah.
And they're all, I mean, two, was it last year or year before, the board actually toured all the facilities? And we took a look at it. I mean, none of them were in any better or worse shape than the other. I mean, the one that struck me the most was West Oaks, and it was one of the newer ones. But I mean, there's a five-degree tilt. You, you're playing uphill in one direction and downhill in another. I don't, and it
Well, and again, long-term thinking before we start replacing courts at sixty thousand dollars apiece, do we want to look at fixing the high schools and putting lights on there? You know, instead of having five courts, have three courts with lights so they could play longer, and the middle schools use the same courts, practice on their own and come play at another. That may be a better long-term plan than, you know, trying to replace as many tennis courts as we have in this area.
And I think we're also using that mod, model for the tracks.
Yeah, I mean, I like that idea better.
Southeastern is the only middle school that's host, well, no, Pine Grove has hosted some track meets, but they do some at North as well, especially when it comes to the conference meets and things like that. But, um, yes, that, that model works out very well. And I know that, you know, Chestnut Grove has played some of their football games at West and Southeastern has played some of theirs at South. So combining using one, fixing one facility really good in each area is more cost-effective than trying to maintain six.
No, we have two of our middle schools that are less than five miles from their feeder high school.
Right.
So it's not a big issue there.
One of them's five hundred yards, maybe.
Yeah.
As a stretch. I mean, you can see the back of one from the other, but trying to maintain all of these, and we were looking at sixty thousand a court. And I guess the alternative is spend eighty, I think, and concrete them for a little longer durability because asphalt has a twenty-year life if you're lucky. Ten, was it ten to fifteen if it's painted in a tennis match type? Because that coating degrades it.
Right.
Because right now we have it at just north, five at forty thousand dollars each.
And that's a full tear-up, re-asphalt, starting fresh. We did some, just changing the toppers on Southeastern and Chestnut Grove a couple of years, and they're already starting to show that wear. So
Both of them cracked within six months.
Yeah, there is a process where you can get basically covered with a, it's a membrane system. I mean, they paint over top of that, but
There's no durability. They look really nice.
For the first
Yeah.
Three months.
If you want to take a picture with a drone, they look fantastic. Um, but they'll re-crack again pretty quick.
Right.
But again, I, we've not torn one up and re-ass, re-asphalte it. I don't know how long that's gonna last before grass comes through it and it re-cracks again. But even when you look at our parking lots that we have repaved recently at King and, um, Pine Hall and that may have been the two most recent. I mean, after a couple of years, you do have some patches where it will crack and grass grows up and, and those type things. I mean, it's just, it's not a, a permanent fix. It's, it's better, a lot better than it was, but it's not a permanent fix.
Concrete's better, but the one thing about concrete, it's gonna crack.
Yeah.
So if you want to change the capital or lose it as is, or address some of the needs there or? No, not for us. No, not at this time.
So we are just increasing this right now by twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
And we're adding line item three, moving everything else down to thirty-eight items and adding twelve thousand to it. Okay?
Do we need to move it to action for, to vote on?
If
It's gotta go to the commissioners by the fifteenth.
If we don't move it to action today, we have to have another meeting. This has to be board
Make a motion, we move the proposed budget, both A and B, to action for vote today.
There's a motion. I just wanted to be sure that the board was completely okay with the capital. I'm not hearing anybody else wanting to add anything or change anything.
You know, we're probably gonna have to cut some of this out anyways, well.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Um, would it be possible to include this list of needs just to, so they can see, even like Mr. Rogers mentioned, holding slots in the budget where, you know, just to keep everyone aware?
Sure. We, we've usually sent the, the roofing list up with ours. We can certainly send this others up as well and say these were additional requests.
Yeah, I think we should send it up.
Yeah.
Our parking lots and stuff like that being in bad shape.
Right. Okay, so there's been a motion made to, uh, accept this capital budget.
Revised budget.
Revised budget with the band needs added. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed?
Uh, just, uh, for clarification, maybe for my part, uh, the capital funds from the county, uh, comes from a sales tax. Is that correct?
Yes.
Two and three-quarter percent?
Correct.
Okay, is that, is that all sales tax collected in the county? The, the capital is two and three-quarter percent of that total collected. Is that correct?
That's what I believe so. Yes, sir.
Or is it two and three-quarter, um, is it two and three-quarter cents of all money spent? Is it, is it a two and three-quarter?
I don't know that I understand the difference in what you're saying.
Well, if there's, um, if there was a million dollars collected in sales tax and we got two and three-quarter percent of it, then that number's gonna be pretty low. But if there's, you know, if there was a hundred million dollars spent in the county and we got two and three-quarter percent of it, then that number's a different number. So is it like a sale, when you go pay a sales tax of six, six or seven, six, six and a half percent or six and three-quarters, whatever it is now?
From my understanding, there's two article sales tax that go into capital funding, and those are based on actual sales, uh, which to me does mean that this number should fluctuate a little bit from year to year, uh, based on what sales will go in. After Walmart came in, it did go up, uh, but it has been a flat number the last couple of years. But yes, it is based on total sales, my understanding of those two articles.
So can we get that number, what the total sales are that we're basing that two and three-quarter percent on? Does the county have that?
My understanding, they estimate, just like we do, what the revenue will be for those sales tax, Article forty and forty-one. Then if it is more, that additional money does go into an account up there, and it does have to come to the school system. Now, uh, they're not necessarily going to give that to us at the time unless, for example, I think they look at it as more for emergencies. If you have to go back up there for an emergency, they do have those funds there. But it is my understanding, those fundings cannot be used for anything else. For an example, I'm thinking right now, after talking with the county manager, we've probably got five hundred and some thousand dollars sitting up there that we've not actually been allotted. But if we had request, and it will probably be used toward, could be used toward this request here, plus what they're estimating and getting in the coming year. Does that make sense?
It does. So does that money carry over? Do they keep the money carried over year to year, or at the end of the year, do they release that money?
Depending on our request, it's there. It can, my understanding, it cannot be used for anything else except for the school system in our request. So let's just say they're estimating, say, uh, two million, but our request is more than that. If they choose to pull part of that money that's sitting there to balance the budget, they can do that.
To balance our budget?
Yes. But I do know some has been held back because, well, we've met our request. But it's my understanding, if you have an emergency and you go up there, that's where a lot of times they will pull that money. Luckily, we've not had to go up there for many emergencies.
So emergency would be in what? A new roof?
Could be.
Could be a new roof, or it could be a chiller go-out that we weren't planning on, and it goes out in September and we need to order one immediately, uh, for a million dollars. And so, you know, it, it could be a, a variety of issues. But, but yes, the money goes into account and
It, it's therefore our use. It, it cannot be used for other reasons, is my
Could years past, we've tapped it for a retaining wall at North Stokes. When it was an emergency, all of a sudden they found it was failing and fatiguing, and there was one other. I can't remember what it was. Oh, the, the roof at South Stokes. There was an underground tank at the
I remember that.
At the maintenance facility, but the other major one was right before school opened in thirteen, I think, twelve or thirteen. The roof at South had never been replaced. We kept requesting it. They, we never got the money. And then all of a sudden, we had a, it was eighty-seven thousand dollars in mold remediation, so we tapped, we had them tap it for a new roof.
Um, who is the one that designated as emergency funds that they would, uh, withhold until we requested it? Why did they not just, uh, when the money's available, why did they not just earmark it and roll it over, uh, around Christmas?
And I can't say that that's been exactly said, somebody designated for emergencies. I just know in conversation, that's just what I have been told, that that money is sitting there in case we did have emergencies. And basically, they have met our request pretty much so on our capital outlay for the
Well
last few years.
Uh, again, every year we have gone with a little bit more than the one point seven. They've given us the one point seven. We've come back and, and, and cut it. Uh, as far as how they do that, the, the answer is the commissioners decide. Uh, they, the money is designated for the school system. To my knowledge, there's nothing in statute that says they have to give you the entire amount each year. It's just, it can only be used for school systems. So they could let it, that account grow bigger and give us money later or use it for emergencies or whatever. They have, it's my understanding, they have the discretion of when they give it, but they can only give it to us.
Um, I have a question for Mr. Johnson. Uh, Mr. Johnson, you know, you deal with a lot of school systems. Is this a practice throughout the, um, districts that you work with? That county commissioners, um, do that to other school systems? They hold money, uh, back? And then the schools, you know, is it a, is it a practice that they use that for emergency money? Or do some, uh, county commissioners just go ahead and give the money as it's available?
No, they all follow basically the same process.
They do and hold the money back?
Correct.
And so the school systems have to request the money, uh, and earmark it for a certain, um, item that they need?
Once the commissioners make their initial allocation from your budget, then when you ask for additional funds, it's exactly the process that Ms. Moore, uh, outlined.
Right. They just hold it back like a savings account.
And those tax receipts come in quarterly? Is that, that's my understanding, is they come in, they do the estimation, but then they come in quarterly, and that's why they wait. That's why they were waiting like last year until November to let us know if they could fund the fire academy, because they would have three-quarters of receipts in to determine, and that's for all of their money, not just capital, but for current expense to find out how much money they would have to fund the fire academy or not. And that's why they wanted to revisit that in November.
And so this is only for capital outlay, the, the money they set aside?
This, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, right. The fire academy does not come out of capital.
Correct. It does not. But that was out of their overall budget.
Right.
And so they wanted to see what income they had off of sales tax, property tax, all of that, and have three-quarters of, of year of information in before they finalize that decision.
Yes, my understanding that Forsyth Tech, I think it's a four percent total. We get two and three-quarters. Forsyth Tech gets one and a quarter. Is that correct?
Yes.
How, is that perpetual? How did that deal become? How did that, how did, who, who divided that out?
That was before my time.
Commissioners a long time ago, prior to, I know it was prior to two thousand and ten, when they started the early college, they started taking away from it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So does that number stay, is that one and, one and a quarter, uh, for Forsyth Tech stay at that? Or can the commissioners change that, or is that, uh, is there an agreement with Forsyth Tech? I'm, I'm just trying to get clear in my mind how that works.
And I, and I don't know those answers. Uh, again, that was in, in place well before I got here. To my knowledge, it's not been revisited, um, since it was originally set up. But I don't know how they wrote that, if that can change or not.
Because, you know, when I look at
In the four percent tax, the, the extra education four percent tax, where some of that goes to Forsyth Tech and some of that comes to us, and then that, some of that, that Popper Springs money?
That's why you see Popper Springs spelled out differently, separately in the budget. Part of, expenditures for Popper Springs and the operational part was part of that four cent tax. So when we make our request, we have to keep that separate. Uh, where there'll no funding source that's coming from those, that four cents. And you'll see in that current expense budget where we've pulled Popper Springs out. So they approve for the operating cost of Popper Springs to come from the four cents.
Now, is that a four cent tax or four cent sales tax? Because I think, I don't think it's a sales tax. The sales tax in North Carolina is only si, and South Carolina is only six percent. I don't think. Yeah, I think it's four cent property tax.
Property. Yeah, that's
It's not sales.
This is likely is current expense in the galley. You see, we requested eighty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for Popper Springs as far as operating, which would be insurance, electrical, water, you know, you, anything with utilities. So that will come, when they approve the budget, you will see that as a separate line item for revenue once we get the final approval from them.
And that money for Popper Springs comes out of that four?
Yes, sir.
Four cent, I guess it's property tax instead of sales tax, right?
I think when you get your property statement, it shows
It shows how much went to the school.
It says four percent education tax, I believe.
Okay. So, so Forsyth Tech gets one and a quarter of that, and we get two and three-quarters. But how many buildings do we have to maintain and how many buildings do they maintain? That, that, it seems like it's maybe not fair, not even
Proportional.
Proportional
Right.
to me. So I'm just wondering how, how, you know, how, how does, how, who cut that deal with Forsyth Tech and how did that work?
I think it was done while Commissioner Morris was a, the county manager, and then the previous, uh, it may have been back when James Booth and, and them were on there when it was originally built. The early college was originally built, and then the Forsyth Tech building was built, and that's how they were funding it.
Uh, I mean, I understand the need to contribute funding, but it needs to be more proportional on our side with the schools having a greater need, like you said, and more building. So I don't know. Where do you get the wiggle room with the allotted percentage to the schools?
Well, I think there are two, I've never researched this, but I think there are two things. You have to go back to the taxing ordinance that the county commissioners would have passed at the initial time this was done. And also, was there also local legislation passed by the general assembly at the time that Forsyth Tech campus and all was, uh, initiated in Stokes County to see if that was all a part of that? To see what needs to be revisited in order to modify that.
Would you like to find, would you like to find that out for us?
Yeah, there's gotta be legislative framework to do it either at the county level or perhaps at both the county and the state level to set those percentages. And to see what needs to be amended if you wanna change that.
And Ms. Moore, could you get with Ms. Edwards and see what's in our capital account leftover from last year? Uh, what, what the, what the excess was last year and what the total amount is in the account? I mean, if we added five thousand to that account or five hundred thousand to that account is important, and then what the total amount would be?
All right. I believe I also need a motion to approve the current expense budget and move it to action.
I made the motion to move them both.
For both. Okay. We'll move it as both then. Thank you. So we have cap, current and capital then is action item C. All right. So next on the discussion, discussion of budget amendments, item B.
So you have two amendments. We have a federal, a budget amendment number two. And as you know, we're all time getting additional funding or some adjustments in our existing federal grants. This is increasing two sixty-four, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Uh, and you can see the breakdown there, uh, for our federal funding. And then in capital outlay, this is where we received some additional funding for our, uh, school buses, our yellow buses, where it's financed through the state. And we've earned a little interest from the endowment and disposition of some assets for two thirty-six, two forty, ninety-four. And then if you will look on page four of that amendment, you will see co-transfers where I have moved the money for the projects that you all approved to get, uh, completed with the additional funding that we had for some, the roofing. So that's also part of that amendment.
Any questions for Ms. Moore?
Make a motion, we move budget amendment one and two to action for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so we'll make that act, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Opposed? We'll make that action, item D, um, budget amendment. Next, we have discussion of policy series four hundred A.
Board, in your packet, you have the spreadsheet with the changes. Uh, the four thousand series is a lengthy series, so we broke that into two parts, uh, A and B. And so these are the changes, the, again, all of the, the details are spread out, spelled out in the Google Doc, uh, with the folders there. Uh, if you hit, this is just for, you know, a first reading as a work session. Next, in two weeks, when we have the board meeting, uh, that's when they would start sitting for thirty days. So if you have any questions about any of these, please let Mr. Johnson, myself, uh, know. But this is the list to be revised at the next meeting.
Uh, I want to make just one comment. It is indicated, most of the modifications are minimal, except policy four-two-zero-two-five-oh-two-nine-seven-two-seven-two, service animal. policy four-two-zero-two, five-oh-two-nine, seven-two-seven-two, service animal.
And please repeat that policy number.
Thank you.
Page three?
Four-two-zero-two.
Okay.
That's the bottom.
Okay. Any discussion, board, or concerns with those policies?
I'm good with them.
Hearing none, we'll move on to discussion of relaunched 2020, 2021. Got the rise?
Board, that is the most current information as of this morning with one mission on my part. It clusters. We do have two clusters. Now, we knew we had five cases at a middle school and it, that one has now been totally deemed a cluster. So now we have had two clusters in our school district this year. But the current overall cases are still remaining low. The trends are, have improved after the rough winter, and they are continuing. This morning, we have three active cases. Again, changes may have occurred while we've been in this meeting, but three adults, active cases and ten active cases in our student body, which again is point three-three percent of our staff and point one-eight percent of our students. I did put in here the recent information I've received from the governor's office and the High School Athletic Association regarding the latest governor's orders of the, from the governor's office, they did tell us that our toolkit should be changing this week on Tuesday to reflect the most recent governor's orders about not wearing face masks outside. But we have yet to, that hasn't been published yet, hasn't been made available to us. But that we would probably making some different adjustments in our school based on that to be compliant with that current order when we received that on Tuesday. And from the High School Athletic Association, people are encouraged to wear face coverings while at outside venues, but it is not a requirement, but they are encouraged to wear them. And they do ask us again to be vigilant and asking people to stay six feet apart from other people that are not in their household. So again, we are encouraging that at the doors and started that Friday evening. But that is the latest COVID update. Are there any questions?
And you said that potentially athletes?
Athletes and spectators who are, if they're sitting on the bench together, they should be wearing something like a baseball game.
But actively participating.
But once they run out onto the field, they do not have to wear face coverings anymore. Where before, if somebody went to bat, they were to have a face covering on. Now they don't have to if they're in the game. If they're sitting on the bench, they would still wear one in, in that close contact area.
Okay, any questions regarding that, board?
Are we going to take the mask into graduation and go ahead and suggest household sets? X amount of, I know at the early college, they had them, got them marked out.
Well, it becomes more difficult at our bigger high schools. But that is the expectation that we will tell people, try to sit in clusters with your family members. And again, if they choose not to wear a mask at the outdoor stadiums, they would not have to. We will just ask them to sit with their families in those clusters. But as far as, do we know who all, whose cluster?
Yeah, I mean.
No, we don't. But we will encourage that. We will follow the rules by encouraging that.
Okay.
But not requiring masks at the outdoor event?
No, and it was not required Friday or Saturday at the early college. Some still chose to, and that's fine. I chose to for pollen as much as any reason.
Right.
I have bad allergies and it helps. But, you know, some people did and some people did not, and, and that worked out fine.
Okay. So next, we have item E, EC contracts. It was moved from the consent agenda. Any concerns or, or questions, or would you like to add anything, Ms. Collins?
No, but I would like to say how much I appreciate the board recognizing the need for an MTSS coordinator and admitting the academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs for all of our kids. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you for the consideration. The contracts that you have are not different from the ones that we've had last year. There are some traditions that we just can't fill that we have to use a contract for. The only monetary difference is the Bayata contract went up two dollars an hour. Other than that, all the other contracts are the same.
Does the Bayata, after price increase, is that still competitive to what potential other suppliers could provide? Or are there any other potential suppliers?
So what we do is we try to, a lot of these students who require a nurse also have a nurse when they are at home. So we try to stay with the same company and the same nurse most of the time so that there's consistency for the student. But there also aren't very many out there anyway. We will be getting, there's a company called Angels of Care that, a student that we will be receiving for our summer program that had not been in school during the school year because of COVID issues. And so they will be new to our county. They use Angels of Care. And they will be coming to our summer program, just found out last week. So there'll be one more contract coming from that company as soon as I get that back from them and it gets to Mr. Johnson.
Okay. I'm good.
Any other questions, board, regarding these contracts, concerns, anything? Any, any significant changes? That's all I was going to ask. You said everything's pretty much stayed the same from last year.
So with that being said, I'll make a motion to move them to action.
Okay, there's a motion. Thank you. And a second. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Uh, any opposed? We'll make the approval of the EC contracts, item E under action. Next, we have the action agenda, item A, which we're going to hold on that one. So we'll skip to item A being the teacher supply store that was presented to us as a new item at the beginning of the meeting. The Stokes County Teacher Supply Store. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Next, we have item B, the current and capital expense budgets. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented and amended.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Next, we have item C, the budget amendments as presented by Ms. Moore. Is there a motion to approve those two?
I'll make a motion to approve one and two, budgets one and two.
I second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Next, we have item D, the EC contracts. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the EC contract.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
So next, I would need a motion to go into closed session, please, or information and announcements. Or we can just review those on our own unless there's something you need to.
No, I was just going to say, you have the information in front of you.
I know we have the upcoming retirement banquet, correct?
That is the thirteenth. If you have any questions, just let us know.
All right. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
For move.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Robertson, I heard you. All those in favor?
Uh-uh.
Thank you all. Hope you have a great day.